Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our first meeting of June. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 3rd, 2019, which was properly distributed posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. Please be advised that fire -- the city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Here.
President Nigel.
Here. And now I'll call upon our City Clerk, Rosemary Ligatis, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please read the notices regarding closed sessions, hearings, and comments?
A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the note items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30 and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's office at rlikatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for regular enclosed session meeting of May 21st, 2019? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, great. Onto reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I think we're all happy to have had so far the first half of the week, nice sunny weather, not a lot of rain. So my first announcement is that my next meet the mayor event is this Sunday, June 9th, from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning at the farmer's market. So that's at the Park and Shop Lot Number 2 on the corner of DeForest Avenue and Maple Street. So please stop by, say hello, tell me if you've got anything you want me to try to look into and see if we can fix. And also tell us what we're doing right. On Monday, June 3rd, we welcomed our 2019 Summit interns to City Hall. There are eight college students who are assisting with us with projects related to website content, programs and support services for seniors, environmental stewardship, economic development, and common council orientation materials during the month of June. We're thankful that these outstanding young people are interested in learning more about municipal government and are available to participate in this important program for us. We got a lot of good research out of them last year, and Amy Cairns is the person in the building who runs the program. She works really hard at it and runs a tight ship, and she told me that she thinks every single one of them, all eight of them, are outstanding. So they'll be here for the month of June, and it's great working with them. The Fourth of July is coming up. Summit's 72nd Annual Fourth of July is less than one month away. The day-long celebration includes a children's decorated bicycle parade and the grand fireworks display, as well as a food truck festival, live entertainment, and carnival rides. I hope you will join the tradition and celebrate your Fourth of July with us in Summit. For more information or to make a donation, go to summitycommunityprograms.com. Donations are needed, as this is a community-supported event. Please support it if you can. And lastly, the Summit Police Department is hosting its annual food and household goods collection to help food insecurity issues in Summit. The SPD's goal is to collect 1,000 pounds of food and other items to support Family Promise and the Junior League of Summit, and they disperse the food and the goods to those in need in the community. The deadline for donations is June 10th. Please go to cityofsummit.org for a list of drop-off locations and items to donate, and at least one of the locations is right outside the door here in the atrium. So thank you, and that's it. Council President.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Onto our City Administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. With rain anticipated tonight, the repainting of crosswalks in the downtown is canceled and will take place on Thursday night, beginning at 9:00 PM into early Friday morning. Further, please be advised that the city is anticipating the start of construction on the southwest quadrant, which is across from the YMCA, of the Village Green, beginning on Monday, June 10th. The project is part of the New Jersey Department of Transportation grant that was awarded to the city to improve walking conditions to transit facilities and includes the reconstruction of the walkways, lighting, and some minor landscaping. The area will be fenced off and closed to the public during construction. All work will be performed during the daytime hours and should have no impact on traffic, parking, and neighboring properties. Construction should be at least two to three weeks, with lighting installation taking place at a later time frame. Last Thursday, the city officially opened the new Summit Community Center with ribbon-cutting ceremony and public tours. If you have not visited this building, please do so before it loses its new car smell. Department of Community Programs has now permanently moved back to this really impressive facility and for its programs, center of its operations, and their programs are available for elementary school children, teens, seniors, plus recreational sports leagues. For more information, please visit summitycommunityprograms.com. And finally, I want to express my gratitude to the active and retired members of the Summer Firefighters, FMBA Local 54, who, as they've done for the last 30 years, gathered at St. Teresa Cemetery in Summit over a week ago now to place memorial flags on the graves of the firefighters that have served in the Summit community. Thank you to all the Summer Firefighters and family members that continue this heartfelt tradition. So thanks, guys.
That's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you. Thank you, Michael. And for my Council President's report, I'd just like to announce, if you haven't seen, Summit is having its first Pride event ever, and it is going to be on the Village Green this Friday, starting at 6:00 PM. And I want to thank the Department of -- and I think we all do, Department of Community Programs for setting this up. We look forward to seeing it. So Mark, thank you, and to your entire team, thanks very much. And with that, I'm going to now -- we have one presentation. It's not on the agenda that folks are following. It is, though, from the Fire Department to talk about the new fire headquarters. For those of you who have been following council meetings, you know that we have been talking about Broad Street redevelopment and the need to move the fire headquarters from where it is currently on Broad Street because of the redevelopment plans that are going to take place in that area. And the chief and his team are going to present to us where they are right now with the development of plans regarding the new fire station. So Chief, it's all yours.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor. Appreciate it. Hey, real quick, just before we get started, just to talk a little bit. Milburn had a house fire today in their town. Some of yours responded in, and unfortunately, they did one rescue attempt, and the residents to come through their injuries. One of their condolences, this is in Milburn, and shout out to the good work that our firemen do and Milburn Firemen does, working together to try to mitigate these problems. So just a little condolences there. So I appreciate us giving the time tonight to talk about the fire headquarters. Real quick, if I may, I asked my team to come up today because they're really doing a lot of the work to get this project going. We have Deputy Chief Nelson, Deputy Chief Nelson, he's heading up the project team along with Battalion Chief and Bimbo and Lieutenant Harneids. They're really the group that's really working. They're meeting once a week with our internal group to really get the crust of how we're going to build this building with cost savings in mind and what it takes to build the firehouse to meet our needs today and also moving forward. So we'll do a quick little talk on that. So real quick, here we go. Real quick, just going to a quick little recap. This is our couple of stages. Fire Department was incorporated, was built in 1890. This building, the top picture, was across from Summit Diner. We occupied that building for a period of time, on and off between 1890 and 1920. The bottom left, the middle portion, was our original firehouse, which was 1901, and then 1948, to the left, they built an addition onto it, and we've been occupying that site ever since. And then in 1976, they put addition onto the right side of that building. So it's been an old building, a lot of additions built onto it, and so we'll kind of incorporate some of the features that you'll see later on in some of these buildings into our new structure. Ironically, we did a historical background on that site, and this was a lumberyard that was owned by one of our first fire chiefs, Muchmore. It was kind of located on the tail end of that site, more towards Clint O'Dwyane. Did a little research, and this is kind of the historical site that just was on that site way back in the early, late 1890s. But just real quick, we're just going to do a quick project recap, how we got to this point, some project schedules, what's been done on the site so far to prepare for the build, architectural design, and some improvements that we have in a new build we don't have in our old building. All right. So real quick, we started this process in June of 2014. We did a quick need assessment study on our current building to see if it was feasible to build on our existing site, and we can do any kind of renovation to an existing building. So we hired a LeMay Erickson-Wilcox to do the study. We did an evaluation of the site itself. We looked at vehicle circulations around the firehouse, the apron, the visibility, safety. We looked at training features within the building, and we also looked at the building itself, elements of the building, and we looked at a life safety code within our current building. You also looked at gender quality of building, how it fits for different genders of our needs going forward in the public when you enter our building. Looked at emergency response path in and around the building, looked at apparatus bays, how they fit our current apparatus and our operations, decontamination, which is a big part of why we need one of our firehouses that's efficient in, and also the mechanics of the building, plumbing, electrical, and all the data systems. And very quickly, we learned that the building is old, this site can't support a new building, and our firehouse needs to be moved off-site. That led to a feasibility study in 2017. We looked at our internal, we looked at our firehouse, our current operations, and what we need square footage-wise to operate. So we kind of did a basic layout of things like our decon room, our turnout gear room, lack of elevators, EMS storage. We also looked at some operational, our admin needs, what we need to operate currently and into the future, and we got all these boxes, we call them, put them together, and they came up with a total square footage of what the fire department needs to operate today and also moving into the future. So that's kind of how we got the size of the building based on a couple of those factors. And then we looked at a couple of different sites in Summit, and then the site that we proposed to build on was the Broad Street East Lot. Out of all the sites we looked at, this put most fit our needs square footage-wise and also durability-wise and added traffic compared to the other two sites that we looked at. That led us to, and as Council knows, in the beginning of the year, we contracted LeMay Erickson-Wilcox, the architectural firm, so we've been working with them since January, and we were authorized to go through the first two steps, which is design development, which is the step we're currently in now. And right now, we're just about to finish that. After we go in front of the planning board in late June, we'll move on to the construction documentation phase. And the design development phase, we start to do some site preparation work. We took the footprint of our proposed building, and we did some boring samples on the site to see what the soil composition was, kind of can support a structure to size. And then based on those findings, as Council knows, last meeting, we were authorized to go to a second part of some environmental work, more so looking at a lot of historical fills on this site. They'll be starting out this Friday on that site. It's probably going to take about one day, and they're going to do about maybe 15 to 20 boring on that site to see what the ground is made up of and try to get some sort of fill out of there. So this is currently now, this is what we're looking at. I guess our product team spent a lot of time on the design. This is kind of the design we're probably going to present to the planning board. A lot of features in here that we have is, this area here is the decontamination room off Apparatus Bay. Firemen can come in here, and they can take all their old turnout gear off that's been contaminated, go through a series of decontaminant. They can also go in here and gross decon, shower, and this area here is more of a storage locker room for all their turnout gear. There's also an EMS storage room, is placed to fill our SBA bottles. And I noted that this whole area is separated from the rest of the building because all the contaminants that are in it. So they spent a lot of time designing that feature. We're also going to have a fire prevention education room. We do 200-plus education visits to fires every year, so this room is going to enable us, this isn't to come in and have a special place to come to. We're going to kind of design a lot of interactive props for the kids to get involved with, along with fire prevention activities as well. This is the mezzanine. One of the goals of this new build was to incorporate a lot of training features into this firehouse. We spent a lot of time going off-site around the county, around the state, around the country, doing a lot of trainings. So one of our goals is to incorporate, just by design of the building, it creates a lot of open spaces that we can take advantage of. So this is going to have a lot of opportunity to do a lot of training right in our building. One of the features we're looking at to do a little mini Summit streetscape of what downtown Summit looks like, and have a lot of firemen, we can actually use a lot of training right in these rooms, have some partitions that are movable, kind of set for rescue scenarios. Then also incorporate into this, into the second floor, is our EOC and our training room. This room is going to be a lot of state-of-the-art technology, a lot of training, and a lot of EOC, a lot more web-based now. So we're looking to do a lot of interactive training in that room. And also, we have our typical admin areas in here. We have a day room, we have some outside training props. This area is part of the bays. Our program requirements didn't really dictate us to build anything bigger, but this is just an open space on the third floor. We're going to have some outside training props incorporated into this area. Then we have our dormitories and our exercise room interior as well. They also have a po hole in this area.
A what? Sorry? We also have a what?
A po hole for fire. It'll be on the third floor.
Oh.
You have a po, but firemen get down.
Have to have a po.
I know, you do. My son always wanted one from his bedroom to the kitchen.
Yep. And one of the things that we did differently in this build-out was that we incorporated some space for the EOC. We learned in a lot of past events in Summit, usually gets very crowded, sometimes we're there for long durations, so it involves people taking showers, having needs like that. So we actually had some rooms set aside just to support the EOC functions into this area. We also had a room in the dormitory for the team that spend the night, just a room, the private room, so they can actually offset some overnight hours into the EOC. So kind of the function we kind of missed during the last couple of big storms in Summit that I was kind of in need, that really need to address on that. So right now, we're in the process of doing a lot of value engineering with our current layout. We're meeting our project team, led by these gentlemen here today. We'll look at, we're meeting every week. We spend about two, three hours every Monday going over all kinds of design concepts. We also go talk to the architects. One of the goals is to look at every square inch of this building, design it where we can save money. Certain areas, an example of that was, the original design had an open apparatus base that were wide open. Talked to the architects, and we learned very quickly that if you put a column in the middle of the building, you save about a half million dollars in construction costs. All those little things we're looking at. So we're going by room by room, looking at it, trying to value it the best we can. So we do come out to bid, hopefully we have a budget that's relevant, our capital on items. And we're also looking at some sustainable design features we're looking into this building. As we said in the past, we're not going to go for LEES certified, but there's a lot of initiatives we're going to incorporate into this building, things like lighting, floor coverings, try to get floor cover that not require a lot of maintenance, polished concrete, and also a lot of natural. You'll see later on, I have a lot of rendering to the outside, a lot of glass, a lot of natural light, so we don't have to put a lot of lights on. The things like that we're looking at to incorporate into this building. There are a lot of other things we could do. Want to present this, this package, a lot of residents have been talking about solar panels, things of that nature. We didn't include this in the initial budget, but other things, as we move forward, we can make decisions on if we want to get into those type of energy savings. So architectural design, we tried to look at the building in town. We attended a lot of the Broad Street West redevelopment meetings. We heard the public, we had a lot of people that went there. There was a lot of rendering of different type of buildings around Summit, around the country, and kind of looked at what the appetite for the Summit residents wanted. And also, we wanted to look at some of our old historical buildings, this is our firehouse on Summit Avenue, and try to incorporate some of the design features into our current building. So this is our rendering we're probably going to go with. It's been beat up a lot. We spent a lot of time adjusting and looking at it. Some of the features are, you'll notice, there's a lot of windows around the building. That kind of goes, this is our sustainable initiative, we're trying to create a little more, less light in the building. Some architectural features that are around town are the big copings around here that go around. We're also going to move our bell monument, that's curling at our old location, onto the site. So we're going to bring that over and have a little dedication area for all the fire, a couple few firefighters that passed line of duty, and also some of the morals that we have of our existing site. This view is looking at if you're coming up Broad Street from Park Avenue, this is the view that we have coming up, and these are bi-fold doors. We learned that they're a little expensive then, but they also, they're very, very cost-effective, and there are also very, very little maintenance on them. So a lot of our roll-up doors, they break down a lot, a lot of maintenance. So these are the things we're looking at to kind of stay in the building further and kind of lessen our costs. And also, you know, it's a lot of the glasses up top, then again, trying to get in touch initiative on not having a lot of lights on the building, a lot of natural lighting. And this is the view if you're coming down Broad Street, going towards Park Avenue, this is another view that we have on the one side of it. Then again, the door is here, and the landscaping in front of it. So next steps, we're just about to finish the first step of design development. We'll be doing construction documentation. That'll take us probably to November, December-ish, and then the next step will be is bidding. So if we, our timeline is, hopefully go to bidding by the beginning of 2020, and then do some permitting, and then if, you know, if all goes according to plan, we'll look into some deconstruction in sometime in late spring of 2020. That's kind of the timeline that we came up with. When we first sat down with the architects, we could have the timeline of projects and milestones and goals we wanted to meet. So that's the kind of the timeframe that we're looking to do. With that, that is the presentation. So if you have any questions at all, we have the answer.
Great. Thank you very much, Chief. Let me start opening it up for questions. Greg?
Thank you, Council President. So first of all, condolences to the family of the victim in Milburn. Thank you for the brave efforts of the Milburn and Summit Fire Departments. So I think it's important to point out three different things. The first is that they've, the Fire Department has been continuing to do a spectacular job of keeping us safe out of a building that, as you can see from the beginning of the presentation, really is subpar currently. The second thing is that it makes sense to do this now while we're talking about Broad Street at the same time. And the third thing is that if we're going to be doing this kind of a project once every roughly 100 years, I think it's definitely commendable to the guys up here that we're really taking the time to make sure that we do it right. And part of what that means is going to be parking, which we're going to talk about at a next meeting, and they're going to talk about at the planning board, but also the sustainability piece, and especially the value engineering piece. I think that, you know, it's really a great thing that we're taking all of that really seriously. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Marjorie?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief Everson, for the presentation. I'm really pleased to see that you're doing the value engineering and looking at ways to control costs. I think that's great. It's really important that we try to, you know, to rein in the costs and, as you know. The other question I had, the question that I had for you was, you mentioned solar panels. Is the building built in such a way that it's compatible for having solar panels? Will it be built in a way that is compatible?
Well, yeah, it can. It can accept solar panels. It's just really, we're looking at it, if there's enough square footage to make it cost-effective, we're going to get the value of adding the panels, so.
Right.
But there is an area on top of the firehouse, the big flat roof, it could accept solar panels. And we're going to dive into that probably toward the next phase of, you know, try to be a little proactive and try to get that question out there. We're going to do a little study on it. If you do the solar panels, what's the take on it, how much you can put up there, and is it cost-effective, or are we going to yield enough to make it, you know, worth the money you're spending on it? So, yeah, we're definitely going to look at that. We'll have that kind of an option. If you want to go down that road, you can definitely have that information available when the time comes up.
I guess my question also, the second question is, it may not be cost-effective now, but the cost of panels are coming down.
It could, yeah.
So if you prepare the roof in a way that it can accept panels
Yeah.
as the technology improves, that might be something to do down the road.
Yep, yep. But there definitely is an area that could accept panel on the roof, so.
Okay, that's great.
And one thing I forgot to mention in the slot that I probably skipped over because I was talking so fast, is that we've been, we've been working with a couple contractors just trying to get their opinion on where we stand. Everything, these buildings are based on square footage costs. So we have been building out this building. We've been trying to get a little advice on, are we within the square footage that we projected that we would be at square footage-wise? So try to get to match site interest, by making sure as we go through this building, as we design it, that we're well within the square footage cost, so hopefully we're within our budget and below our budget, so.
Thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. It was very good. In addition to sustainability, which I'm glad you're working on, I have questions about resiliency. I know that Councilman Vartan and I attended a meeting about, a lot of towns in New Jersey are putting microgrids in their towns, and considering the increase in severe weather that we're likely to get over the next 50 years, you know, are you, is there anything in this that, like, you know, battery backups, things like that, that you're factoring in?
Do you want to say the title?
Yeah, actually, some of the requirements are for the EOC, is that we have a standby generator, backup generator. So the whole, the building will have a generator, much like we do today. As far as battery backup and all that stuff, I don't think we've really explored that.
Yeah.
But we're trying to hit the standards as required for the EOC and firehouse construction. So there is some resiliency as far as the generator goes.
Yeah. Well, we just saw in this presentation, there's these sort of shed-sized batteries that you can buy, basically, that can store like eight A's worth of power in them. And it's possible, you know, with the Tesla manufacturers, things like that, it's possible one of those might be better than a generator that burns diesel.
Yeah, we could definitely look into that.
Yeah, we have to look into that and see whether it's, I guess you have to look at the cost and what's
Yeah.
Obviously, those costs are coming down as those things are designed better and better.
Yeah.
So I guess we have to see where that fits into the design.
Yeah.
And really, room and everything else. I mean, how much room do we have on the property?
Agree. And I don't want to go too much in the weeds, but there is a way you can buy the power at night and then use it in the daytime, which helps to get your money back. The other thing I want to know, I know that we've talked about having other Union County Fire Departments come and train with us after we build this facility. Is that still a possibility?
Yeah, so one of the goals was with the, with doing a little, with the training initiative, have a lot of training props, is to have some out there, just come in on weekends, volunteer departments, prepared departments, and do some training. Also, the EOC is going to have a lot of technology for a lot of the web-based training.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's kind of one of our goals, want to get everything established, to offer some training to other departments coming to Summit and training in Summit.
Right.
And we won't be doing any kind of live burn, everything will be dry, but we'll have the props there and all the equipment. Instead of flowing water, we'll be using compressed air to fill hose lines, to simulate us dragging hoes up stairways, and also, that'll all be built into the space we already have into the building, so.
Right. That'll be good.
Yeah.
And then my last question, a little technical, but, so, we're boring these holes in the parking lot for the new place to see what's down there, right?
Yeah.
Because it's got a historic fill issue. But usually, the remedy, I mean, do we have to, do we have to excavate a lot to build the new building? Is that why you have to do that?
Yeah, we do. So the initial, part of doing the first geotech work was to look at the composition of the soil, right? Everything has the compression rig to itself. They look at what the soil is made of, and that tells the engineers how much soil they have to remove from that lot to get down to solid ground that'll support our structure. So based upon the Phase One or the first geotech work, we've got to estimate probably around four to five feet out of that site, wherever the building's going to be. It's not a tremendous amount of fill, but it's not a little. It's kind of, you know, in between a site, but it's understandable for all the historical fill that was in. As you know, that trail used to be elevated years ago. They dug it out and all the fill went, left the ride of the tracks. And that's what that whole lot is kind of built on, that fill that was dug out.
Right.
The phases we're doing now, that we're going to start on Friday, is really going to look at what kind of all the historic fills down there. That used to be an old offshoot to the rail system, do a lot of underground railroad lines, to hit a lot of what they think metal on the initial boings. So the second phase is looking what's, you know, under that ground. So try to get a good idea. So we do go out to bid, and we do do the engineering specs, we have a good idea what's on the ground. And try to keep that, you know, cost and estuary on that.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's it. Anyone else?
I have two questions, Chief. One is, what's the square footage overall that you guys are looking at right now with the building?
Total square footage is 30,000 square feet.
And when, and you had said that previously you guys had done analyses as far as what is the square footage that you would need for properly sizing a building. Is that within the range of what you're?
Yeah, yeah. So when we did the programming phase dictated what the square footage would be. So when we went through the programming phase, we looked at how, what square footage we needed through operations, through admin areas, industry standards, and all those have a generic square footage of them. And all those build-outs came up with the size of the building. So that's how they start, with boxes, small boxes, build out based upon our needs, admin operations, and that kind of, at some point, we have enough spaces, and then they tally up the square footage. So that kind of dictated how we had all the square footage.
And I, thank you for doing the value engineering. Obviously, it's good that you guys are doing that. When do you think we would know what, basically, an all-in cost for this?
So we're going to finish, we'll finish the design development at the end of June. So the next step is construction documentation. Probably about a month into that, we're going to go back and re-estimate what everything's going to cost before we get too deep into it. And then we'll kind of know, you know, on square footage, you know, what that's going to be. That'll give us opportunity to make some adjustments if needed before we get too deep into the construction documentation. So probably, you know, I would say probably sometime in July-ish, we should have a re-estimate of what the building's going to cost, once we finish the design development, so.
And I think that would be good at that point in time to share it with the councils as far as what we're looking at.
Yeah, that's been our goal, is to keep it under budget. So we're really doing, these guys are doing a tremendous job on keeping that cost down.
And we appreciate it. So do the taxpayers.
Yeah, so.
Let me, let me open it up to the public. If there are members of the public that would like to ask any questions, now's your time to ask questions about the presentation. Does anybody have any questions that they want to ask? Feel free. Okay.
If I could just take one more minute?
Absolutely.
I would like to tell you, real quick, one of the big features in this building is the decontamination of our firefighters and how it affects the firefighters long-term with cancer and stuff. So just maybe with the, real quickly, just give a quick little debrief on the decon area?
Sure. One of the things we worry about now as firefighters is the occupational cancers that we're facing for the rest of our lives. One of the areas we're not really skimping on is how we're going to protect ourselves moving forward. I think it benefits us, it benefits the city. What we're finding out is the gear that we use to protect us at fire incidents, we're bringing all that contamination back with us to the firehouse. And as it off-gasses, we're being exposed, not just at the fire scene, we're being exposed for the rest of the time. You know, they could off-gas for a couple days. So what we built into the, into the structure is a decontamination area where we could bag up the gear on scene, bring it back to the firehouse, put it right in an extractor that cleans it totally, gets all the contaminants out. And then, as opposed to waiting for, you know, several hours till we're back in service going upstairs and showering, we have showers right off the engine room floor, so we could go in and clean those contaminants off of us. And also, the gear storage area, where right now it's right on the apparatus bays and we're exposed to those contaminants, anyone that comes in the building is exposed to those contaminants. In the new building, we have a gear storage area that's its own separate area. It's got its own ventilation, it has its own HVAC, it's climate-controlled. For one, it's better for the gear, because being out in the bright lights and in the sun, it wears the gear a lot quicker, so it protects the gear and protects us. And this way, that gear isn't ventilating anywhere else into the building. Anything that off-gases gets blown right outside. It's not an environmental hazard, it's more, you know, to protect us and protect anybody that comes in the building. So that's one of the areas that, you know, we're pretty steadfast that we're going to make sure we do that right.
Great, thank you. Okay, before you leave.
I just want to say thank you. You've been working really hard on all this, gentlemen, and we appreciate it. And I think it's long-term, it's best for the city to have firefighters that are protected and are going to want to work here. So, thank you.
And thank you for the support.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and that's it. Thanks, guys.
Appreciate it.
We're now moving on to public comments. Before I do public comments, I just want to open it up for public comments. I just want the public to know, there's a couple of changes in the agenda, and so this way, in case folks were planning on speaking about it, they would know to speak now rather than wait for things that won't show up. One, with regard to Capital Projects, number one, dealing with a professional services contract, that's pulled for tonight for further consideration. And the other thing that's not on the agenda tonight is for the grant permission for the Parkline Foundation for the Bike and Art Event at the request of the Foundation. So with that, let me open it up to the public. If anyone has any comments regarding anything that's not on the agenda, now's your time to come on up, state your name, and give your address, and feel free to give us your comments.
Hi, my name is Nicolas Joban Batista. I live in Summit, East Summit. My address is 1 Henry Street. I'm here to speak in favor of the Parkline Project, mostly because I live across the street from the Parkline, and I think this is going to be, bring a lot of benefits to ourselves and in general to the community. I moved to Summit with my wife and our three kids four years ago, and we hear about this project, but we thought it was kind of a dream. Then we saw Phase One built, and six months ago, I was lucky enough to join the Foundation. The reason I think is something that is going to be good for the community is because, few reasons. One of them is, I think Summit is kind of isolated from the rest of Summit, downtown especially. The only way we can go to downtown is walking. Usually, you had to go through Broad Street, and you had to cross two avenues and then go uphill. And you walk mostly along the parking lots from Salerno Dwayne. And the other way is going behind Overlook. Basically, you end up at the library, but there is a crossing street that is really, I'm sure you know it, is an intersection basically between Morris and Lynn Side. So it's no good, it can take you two, three minutes to cross it. And I will never let my kids go to mid-school through that intersection. So that's one reason I think is positive. Having a connection that goes safe without cars in between, you can send the kids straight to mid-school. We can go to downtown with bikes or scooters, you know, our kids, and at the same time, you can bring downtown all the way to Bryant Park. So I think it's a win-win, and it's a gift for the city. I'm closing here, but I know there are concerns from neighbors because I see them. I'm not undermining those concerns. The reason I think is, I would be, feel sorry if the concerns turn the project down. I think the concerns can be addressed, and hopefully we can find a point in between.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Keith Langworthy, and I've been a resident of Summit for 23 some odd years, and I live at 3 Windsor Road in Summit. And I have spoken to many members of the council, as you probably know, and our mayor. So I, but I've never gone on public record stating my support for the Parkline. And I feel this is something that is, will benefit the community. It ties in with the green projects we have going in the community. We've got the Summit Conservancy, it runs right along, parallel with that, in terms of bringing a new trail, new green space to Summit. It also, it connects East Summit with the downtown, as Nicholas had mentioned. Oh, I should also mention, you know, full disclosure, I am on the board of the Summit Parkline. And I think this, the Parkline itself connects trails and communities, parts of, some of the people aren't even aware of, like Hidden Valley. Most members of Summit, if you, most of our citizens don't even know what Hidden Valley is or where it is. This would put it on the map. It would connect all the green space that we have, Bryant Park, Hidden Valley, and the downtown. And specifically, the bridge that will be discussed in future meetings. This bridge does connect East Summit with the downtown, even if you separate it from the Parkline. And I think, as the treasurer of the Parkline, I would hate to see us give the money back. We've raised all the funds we need to build the Parkline, to build the bridge. I know there's been scuttlebutt around that we don't have, we have tons of money to do this. There is no question.
God bless you.
And we gather more. I'm the treasurer, and my biggest upset is we can't spend it. So I really would like this council to consider our project and allow us to spend all the money we freeze. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, with that, I will close the public comment section, moving on to ordinances for hearing. We have one ordinance for hearing. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that ordinance?
An ordinance to vacate a sewer easement on Nob Hill Drive, Block 3002, Lots 5, 11, 12, 13, and 14, in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, and to release all public rights and interests therein resulting from any dedication thereof.
Okay, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance vacates an unused sewer easement on Nob Hill Drive, and as the clerk said, it's Block 3002, Lots 5, 11, 12, 13, and 14. This easement was created in the 1950s as part of its subdivision, but it was never used for a sanitary sewer line. And that's, that has been confirmed by the city. So at this time, we are, since we don't have use for this easement, we are going to vacate it. So I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
Second? Okay, hearing is open. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? We just have to say something. Almost you feel like you have to say something at a hearing.
No, you don't.
No, you don't. You really don't.
No, you really don't.
No, you really don't. Okay, anyway, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to consider this hearing closed. Okay, moving on, ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk, would you please read them?
An ordinance to vacate a sewer easement on Nob Hill Drive, Block 3002, Lots 5, 11, 12, 13, and 14, in the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, and to release all public rights and interests therein resulting from any dedication thereof.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. We just had a hearing on this ordinance, and I move this ordinance for consideration.
I second. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, moving on. We have a number of ordinances for introduction. Council, Madam Clerk, would you read the first of finance?
Bond ordinance appropriating $2,100,000 and authorizing issuance of $1,999,000 bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Little?
Thank you, Council President. This is the first of several bond ordinances that I'm going to be introducing tonight that support the budget that was passed by this council several weeks ago. This first ordinance, number 6501, is for the funding of the capital improvements, and I move this for introduction.
Second?
Roll call, please. Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, finance number two. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of that?
Bond ordinance appropriating $1,570,000 and authorizing issuance of $1,495,000 bonds or notes of the city for the purpose of acquisition and property, of property authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Little?
Thank you, Council President. This finance ordinance, number 6506, is the bond ordinance that funds the purchase of 7 Cedar Street, which, as we have discussed before, is a key part of the Broad Street redevelopment, and I move this ordinance for introduction.
Second? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, finance number three. Madam Clerk, would you read the title of that ordinance?
Bond ordinance appropriating $101,000 and authorizing issuance of $96,000 bonds or notes of the city for various parking utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Little?
Thank you, Council President. This finance ordinance, number 6505, is the bond ordinance to fund the parking utility improvements, and I ask that this ordinance be moved for introduction.
Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Yes. Okay, finance number four.
Bond ordinance appropriating $426,000 and authorizing issuance of $405,000 bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Little?
Thank you, Council President. This finance ordinance, number 6504, is to the bond ordinance that funds the sewer utility improvements, and I move this ordinance for introduction.
Second? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, last one, finance number five. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of that?
Bond ordinance providing for the improvement of various roads in and by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating $1,370,000 therefore, directing a special assessment of part of the cost thereof, and authorizing issuance of $1,304,000 bonds or notes of the city for financing the same.
Councilwoman Little?
Thank you. This final finance ordinance, number 6502, is the bond ordinance that will fund the improvements of roads in the city, and I ask that this ordinance be moved for introduction.
Second? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye. Okay, moving on to resolutions. The first set of resolutions are from law and labor. Councilwoman Bowman?
Thank you, Council President. Okay, first one is ID 6479, which is the renewal of liquor licenses. This is not all the liquor licenses in downtown, but it's the majority of them. And these liquor licenses are regarding distribution, clubs, as well as consumption on premises. These, like I said, these licenses go from July 1st through June 30th, 2020. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Matt.
Sorry, thank you, Council President. Just my normal question about how we can petition the state to get some more liquor licenses in town.
Get more people?
Keep that on the radar. Okay, thank you.
See, this is why we're doing Broad Street redevelopment. Get more liquor licenses.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments from members of council? Okay, any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Law and Labor, number two.
Okay, as we discussed, oh, I'm sorry, it's ID 6525. As we discussed in a closed session, this is to extend the sick leave for our parking service employee, and it's her, she has earned it, and her time is from March 3rd through 5/23. The good news is that she is back and working. So I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one finance. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This finance resolution is to authorize 2019 salaries. This is the authorization for the salary increases due to longevity or step increases, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Capital Projects, as I previously announced, Capital Projects, number 16513, has been pulled. So we move on to 6517, which is Capital Projects, number two. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This pursuant to discussion at closed session, this resolution appoints Julian Hempel to the Recycling Advisory Committee as a student member. Julian has participated in the committee unofficially for the past year, and we appreciate her willingness to volunteer. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Comments or questions from members of the public? All I will say, it's always great to see that young people are involved in civic government, and involvement especially in something as important as recycling, which is a huge, huge issue and becoming, which is just growing in complexity and importance to the city as well as for other communities. So I commend her for willing to step up and volunteer and help us out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one additional Capital Projects resolution. Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the disposal of 17 older vehicles that are no longer needed by the city, and they'll be disposed of by online auction through Municbid. And as those of you who followed at home or here know that last council meeting, we approved the participation with Municbid for online auction services. Participation in the online auction services to dispose of surplus property brings revenue back to the city for unneeded vehicles. So that's a really great thing to do, and I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? Well, we can only hope that we get great bids on it, and we make a lot of money. There you go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to community programs. We have three resolutions. Community Programs, number one. Councilwoman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution, this is ID, excuse me. This is ID number 6447, is to authorize an art project at the Tier Garage on Springfield Avenue. We have a very accomplished artist named Hellbent, who's going to produce an abstract, multi-colored, multi-patterned outdoor mural for the main entrance of the Springfield Avenue garage. And it's going to be paid for by the Summit Public Art Committee and by, and by the Parking Services Authority as well. So I move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council?
Yeah, on this project, we have a little unknown on this painting underneath the beam. Are we doing, who's painting? Is it, is it the?
Rita, do you want to bring it up?
Yeah, bring it up, yes.
Yeah, I think she does want to come up.
Rita's doing it. Rita's handling it.
I have my forklift already. Now, Parking Services is paying. We are doing the insides of the garage for our new wave fighting signs. So we're doing some pillar work and painting the elevators and casings. So we're going to pick up that portion.
So that's part of the?
That's the addition, no, it's added on. I just got a quote yesterday. But that's, it's not included in the 6,000, it's additional cost.
But it's painting you were going to do anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, that painting, wasn't that part of the capital improvement?
Yes.
That was approved two?
Two years ago.
Years ago, or whatever. Okay. Okay, I guess the other thing, it's kind of in my head on this, and this, I appreciate the Arts Council, but this is kind of hidden. And at one time, we were talking about putting that gateway to there, and we didn't do it because we didn't see it. I mean, I guess I'm just having a problem with putting a mural that is not going to be well, not very visible.
Well, I see Vivian Furman.
Yes.
Vivian, come on up.
Hi. I spend quite a bit of time walking on the street, and you can see it very well. There's a, because of the new building that was built, you know, the entrance is quite wide. So I don't think anyone, and the wall is on an angle. So I don't think anyone will have trouble seeing it as they walk. I think cars will be able to see it. These colors are very bright and interesting, so that will capture people's attention as well.
Sure. Nora, do you want to go in?
No, just my recollection about not putting the sign as, at the entrance of the driveway. The reasoning for that was that, it was the first of the reason to do it initially was cars would see it and then be able to pull into the garage and know that it's there. The problem is when you actually really thought about it, by the time cars drove up to see the sign, they were passing it. And so that, I think, I thought that was the reasoning. I am not, you know, I love to think my memory is great, but.
Marjorie.
Thank you, Council President. I was just wondering, is there a possibility, if there's more funding available, to wrap this mural along the train tracks?
Absolutely. In fact, I was walking on Morris, and if there is money, I mean, that's an amazing wall that many, many people will see. It's broad, excuse me, right? That it faces the back?
It's the post office.
Right. So.
But, so, just if I can interrupt Vivian. I had Vivian and I and the artist met in a very, very, very cold January day. And the artist came out from Queens with his daughter, who was sleeping in the car, as I recall.
Two of them.
Yeah, right? And we, the three of us, went around and looked at the site. And the problem that he has, and initially, I think in my head also, I thought the side that's facing the train tracks, because then trains passing by, the other side of Broad Street can see, and we're doing all this Broad Street redevelopment, it makes a lot of sense. The problem is that he needs a forklift, and he's not enough space physically to get a forklift on that side to do that entire, because he's not hanging down from the, from the thing. And it's not, you know, they had a mural done that was like a historic picture on a private building.
Near the diner?
On Union Plaza, but that was done through a robot.
That was a computer.
Computerized. This, the artist himself is going to paint. And so, right, Vivian?
Yes, it's hand painted.
Hand painted. And so that's the difference.
But I will tell you that there is a corner that, you know, you have the facade of the front entrance, and then there's a corner that does face Broad, the train station. And he would be able to do that if there was additional funding. So you'd have, I don't know, a sixth, an eighth of the wall, but it would be a corner that would capture people's attention as they were driving down the street. That he would be able to do, because he mentioned to me that.
He did to me, that's right. He said that, depending on how much, you know, how much we were willing to spend.
Right, right.
Matt?
I have a suggestion and a question. The suggestion is that you could, could you possibly auction that off at the gala?
Oh, we intend to auction it at the gala, believe me.
Yeah, very good. That seems very effective. And then the question is that I think Councilwoman Fox brought up to me, there are some Hellbent pieces in the building.
Yes, there are.
Next door, right? What's the company?
Well, this is Boston Consulting, and they, I happen to know the curators who curated that building. And sadly, we can't go in, but if you go by it in the evening, you will see they have some magnificent stuff. They have an incredible bronze staircase they did. They also have.
That Hellbent did?
No.
No.
The building did, but they have two, I believe, very large paintings, and they selected Hellbent to do them.
Right. That's pretty cool.
Yeah, it is cool.
Well, Mike?
I think it's a great idea around extension. I know we talked about that at the meeting the other month. But I, again, I think this is just neat how this is going to pop. And, and part of it, I, it is kind of out of the way, but I think that's one of the neat things about art that's placed in places you don't expect it, right?
Exactly.
I mean, while, I drive back there all the time, you know, and a lot of people do, and to actually see that when you're not expecting it is one of the joys, I think, of public art. So I think it's a neat spot for it, and it certainly, that building is, I'm sorry to say, sorry Rita, as ugly as it gets.
She doesn't live there.
So it's a, it's a, it's a great, I think, it'd be a nice little addition for that. And I applaud you. And, you know, this is what's great about our community. Here's a private organization where Vivian and all her colleagues spent so much time and effort, and, you know, this is getting done. They're contributing two-thirds of the cost for this whole thing, and the city's doing a third.
I think it's 50/50.
Is it 50/50? Well, it's 12 or six, and then the paint, obviously.
I mean, depending on what you vote on, I can speak to Hellbent about how much it would cost to do that wraparound, if it were just that wraparound. I mean, he's, as I've told you before, he significantly reduced his rate, because he's a very strong supporter of, you know, small cities. And, and by the way, I've been driving around Summit. You guys are doing a great job. It looks fabulous, really, and all the new things that are happening. It's very exciting.
But again, thanks for all your, the work that you do.
I'm sorry, Mike. Beth, did you have?
Thank you, Council President. I was going to echo some of the things that Councilwoman McTiernan said, but I also wanted to thank you and the Public Arts Committee. I think the Public Arts around Summit is one of the things that really makes us unique and special, and it's something that people comment on in town. It really adds so much value. It's really, it's hard to even quantify. So I think this is a wonderful project. I do, I was going to say some of the same thing. I think art is really special when it's.
A surprise.
It's a surprise, right? And, and bringing it, you know, you come across it. So I think it's a wonderful project. I think he's a wonderful artist, and I really want to thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much. I mean, I remember when, when the Arts Committee came here last year, when we were having all these different committees come and give presentations, and one of the things we said is, it'd be really good if we could do something on, for that, to get a mural on the parking garage. So thank you for getting this all done. And I echo my colleagues' comments. One of the things I do think that we could do on the city's website is put up like a list of different, I don't know if we do already have it, but if we don't, if we could put up a list of all the different places that we have public art with the respective artist's name. Now, I was just in Montreal this past weekend, and one of the things they have is a walking guide of different places that have public art and murals, and so.
We have a very nice website that we spent a fair amount of money developing last year. So if you could just reference that website, people can go directly to our website. They will see the map, they will see the art that's in there, little blurbs about the artist, and other art that we've had.
And maybe donate.
And tie in our.
And maybe donate.
And donate.
And donate. Yeah, tie in the two websites, that'd be great.
I'll talk to Amy tomorrow.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any further discussion? Any, any other comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to community programs, number two. Councilwoman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 6446. So this is to authorize the purchase of a 2019 Ford Fusion from the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council for $26,677 for the Parking Services Agency. The, so, in our committee, the Parking Services Committee meeting, well, first of all, for a long time, we've been talking about trying to have the city purchase electric vehicles. Now, each department has their own issues with purchasing electric vehicles because of the heavy computer systems that all the vehicles have, and it's no different with the Parking Services Agency, because they have the license plate recognition software that's been so effective. But that said, we were able to find a way to purchase this hybrid vehicle. Now, this hybrid vehicle does cost a bit more, quite a bit more, really, than the non-hybrid version. So we looked at that carefully, but thankfully, Parking Services Manager Rena McNanny performed a cost analysis over the lifespan of the vehicle, projecting what the fuel cost would be. And it appears that this is going to be, over the life of it, about $3,000, $3,000 to $4,000 cheaper than buying a gas-powered vehicle. And plus, it's just the right thing to do. So I move this, that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions from members of council? Marjorie?
I think this is great. I've been asking for this for a long time, so thank you very much for doing this. I also wanted to point out, though, that I think for something like Parking Services, this is a perfect application. I have a hybrid car, and it does great with stop and start. And, you know, you can idle and not be idling, which is something that is an issue with the Parking Services cars. So, because you run off the battery when you're idling. So I think you may even see more cost savings. Traffic is like the best place for a hybrid car. So, so anyway, I commend you.
Anyone else? I join in commending you. Thank you for doing this. I think this is great, because I agree completely with Marjorie. We just got a hybrid car. The best use of a hybrid car is being stuck in traffic, because you can see the thing go into charging mode. You know you're not using any gas at that point in time. Okay, any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, number three.
Okay, I, thank you, Council President. ID number 6503. This is to authorize a change order, number 13, for the community center renovation project